Meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm gonna do roll call. Mark Burchard?
Here.
Maureen Borey is absent. Joanne Shirkey?
Absent.
Absent. Ernie Bryson?
Absent.
Absent. Kristi Hilton?
Here.
Crystal Regan?
Here.
Cindy Valentine here. All right, we do have enough for a meeting. We do have a quorum. I will make a motion for trustee Regan to chair the rest of the meeting.
Second. All in figure, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, sir. Let me slide the gavel over.
The first order of business, we have some bills to pay. So I will entertain a motion on this week's bills payable.
I'll make a motion to approve bills payable in the amount of $253,154.32.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any further discussion? The general fund, the escrow for the old club, is that basically just, that's gonna be money in, money out?
Correct.
Yeah, we received a deposit already.
Okay.
So right now, it's still, the expenses are still less than the escrow deposit, so we're waiting for one more invoice to come in.
Okay. That looks like it's on track. So we have motion and support. Roll call. Mark?
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
Chris, I M A S. Cindy?
Yes.
Motion passes for the bills payable. Next, we have our illustrious supervisors' report. He has requested that one of us read this two-page supervisors' report. So because I'm a fast reader, I'll go. He says he's been working a lot on the sewer interceptor, wastewater treatment plant, Pearl Beach Pier, and the Spark Grant projects. The DDA approved to pay 20K, including a broom attachment towards the new skid steer. So we'll now have to divide the costs, once we get the cost of the broom. I believe we're probably waiting on an invoice. The DDA also approved $4,000 for a matching facade grant for scoreboard and more. The DDA also approved major funding for the new weight room and workout room at the high school. Go Rats! I'll just pause that for just a second. I believe we, Chris is chairing a committee, right? That is welcome, welcoming, receives donations from the public?
Yes.
That goes towards the weight room, which the boys and the girls are allowed to use, and that thing is desperately in need of a facelift with paint, matting, new machines, equipment. Do we have any update on the progress on that?
It is scheduled to start the week before school gets out for Christmas.
Oh, so it's coming up? Okay, so there's still time to donate, if anybody is interested in helping out the high school kids and the future generations. They certainly could use it. Ernie says he's working with MedStar, Richmond Lennox, and TriHospital on ambulance coverage and service levels. Magna Inc. in St. Clair is doing a large expansion. They will be hiring approximately 1,200 people in the next six months. 400 of them will be at figure, or six-figure salaries. So it sounds like some good-paying jobs. We want to make a brochure, then give the HR to give to new employees about moving to Clay Township. Will include information on the schools, activities, what our off, our area offers, and metrics like taxes, et cetera. Sounds like a little marketing campaign for the Magna employees. Working with the Algonquin Middle School, the fifth-grade class, and teacher Nikki Degowski to rehab an outside classroom walking trail behind the school. Bring in the DNR to talk to their kids, give them some ideas, maybe making it a storybook trail and featuring different books picked by the class. From conversation at one of your meetings, we are installing a pet blessing box in the park. Donated labor for the building materials come from Chris Amels. Wood also donated from a private citizen. Thank you very much. Drop-off spots for pet food at the Clay Township office or Snoopy's Dog House. Researching many new grant opportunities that we may take advantage of in the future, including a 2024 Clean Water State Revolving Fund and a 2024 Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. So let's hope that research goes good. Looking at options on building three pickleball courts in the park. That sport seems to have taken a lot of legs. I like seeing people play out there. Let's see what else. Reminder for everyone, if you are paying any new bill at the township, you can round up or pay a little more, and the difference will go to the Goodfellows.
But that does need to be specified on the payment.
Okay, so if they pay in person, they can verbally communicate that?
Right.
If they put it in the drop box or send it in by mail?
Right.
Can they write it on the invoice, or do you want a separate piece of paper?
Let us know that they want the additional, go to Goodfellows.
Okay, perfect. Lastly, Ernie met with the local quilters. They want to start a quilting trail where they display quilt-like designs made from wool. It's a cool concept that is a big tourist draw. And that's what we have for this meeting's supervisors' report. Next, we're gonna jump into the public comments. So at this time, we'll open up the floor for public comments. Okay, seeing none. The next order of business is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the board meeting from 11:07:22. Treasure Investment Training and Winter Workshop, $448 from line 101253. 960 Parks and Rec Conference, $456, line 208931 for Cindy Babish. Reports include a voided check run on 11:07, the board approved checks from 11:07, and the checks run in between meetings on 11:21.
Support.
We have motion and support. We will entertain more discussion? Mark, you good? Kristi, got anything?
Nope, I don't.
Consent agenda, can we do roll call?
Sure.
All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Unfinished business, we have none, but it looks like we have some things for new business. First order, 1A, is a generator request by the Clay Township Police Department.
Come on up, Mike.
Chief, do you want to phone this one in, or? Maybe you can just give us a quick rundown, chief, what you're looking for.
Well, we've been kinda limping this one along as, as much as we could, probably for the last, at least, three to four years. One, since the expansion of our department, it no longer hasn't, it's no longer a big enough generator to run both these buildings. So 50,000 KW generator, the one that they are recommending is a 100,000, or 100 KW generator that'll be able to run everything. The problem that we're having with ours right now is, literally, I'm using JB weldings such to keep that thing together and keep it running. And for what they want to do an overhaul on this thing, I guess it'd be different if this was actually the right size for our needs, but it's not. And it's an older unit, so it's just become more of a project than, than we want to keep going with. And what I'm worried about at this point is, we're gonna need it, and it's not gonna be there. Every time we turn around, it's a new mechanical failure with it, so.
Is that diesel or gas?
That's natural gas. Natural gas, automatic transfers on it. And the issues we're having is, the last one we just had is the radiator's shot in it. And they literally would have to pull the radiator from this thing. It's gotta be sent out, be remanned, they'll have to put a temporary generator in place. And then at the same time, they'd go through the rest of the generator, and you're talking several thousands of dollars just to do that alone for something we're gonna end up replacing anyways. The problem that we got right now is, the time it's taking to get generators, right now, we're looking, could be up to about 30 weeks. So it's something we definitely want to get moving on.
You're saying 30, 30 years?
Yep.
How old is that generator?
Oh, I would say it's gotta be close to 25 years old.
25 years?
Yeah.
Is there anything we can do right now in order to keep it going if we do?
It is right now. I mean, we've, we go out there, it, it does its own self-check once a week, but we go through and we do manual tests on it, too. Especially if I see inclement weather or something coming, we'll go out, we'll fire it up, make sure everything's going on, make sure the battery's charged and everything's firing, especially when the weather starts getting colder, making sure that the block heater and that's working on it. But we're doing whatever we can to limp her along and baby her until we can get the new one installed.
What's to make of that generator?
The one we got now? The one we got right now, that is a Cummins, isn't it? Onin?
It's a Kohler?
I think that's... With a Cummins motor.
What is it?
Is it a 302 in there? Okay. No. Really? Okay.
Gotcha.
Lance has worked on it more than me. Well, well, yeah, in the past, but lately, I've worked on it more. Manifolds, yeah. I mean, we, we've replaced almost everything on this thing at one time.
Usually have the shelf life of 18 to 20 years or so, right? And you're at 25?
Yeah.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, there's no doubt about it. And like I say, we've tried to get as much as we could out of it and doing what we can for both offices. Because literally, I mean, if, if it's a hot summer day and that goes down, these offices are gonna close down because you're not gonna have any air in here.
Gotcha.
It will not run the air on this side. It'll keep us running over there.
Yep.
But it will not keep anything running over here. With this new one, it's gonna do everything. The other thing is, right now, if power goes out, we've gotta come over, we've gotta manually transfer a switch on the building over here to get them back up and running. This new system will do everything automatic.
An automatic transfer switch?
Yes, for both buildings.
I'm not familiar with the, where it's located, but is it in a contained building?
It's right behind you. Literally, right here, that fenced-in area we got right there, right inside there. Yep.
What's the area coverage?
On this new one, it's probably about, close to 10-foot long by 4-foot wide, probably about another 4-foot high. It's got a pretty good-sized footprint to it.
That's a V8, too?
I'm not sure on this one. I know the, Ernie had all the specs on it.
Yeah. Chief, does it need a new pad, or can you use the existing?
It looks like they're gonna be able to use the existing, it will be big enough.
That's good.
So, which is a good thing. And they, they take care of removing the other one, getting that out of there.
This is for your building and this building?
Yes, gonna do both. Yep.
So it's a pretty pricey unit, isn't it?
Put half the bill?
Yes. And, and you know what? We got, well, I've gotten bids a couple different times on this. The other lowest bid other than this was in the 90s. So Brenner Electric really gave us a lot better price. And the same exact generator.
That's a huge savings.
Yes, huge.
So what is the make of that one?
Blue Star.
Where's that made?
I think that is a US-made, but everything that I'm reading on them, they're top-of-the-line rating.
Warranties in that?
Yeah, it will have all, everything coming with it, whatever the manufacturer's warranties are with it. It's pretty much standard across the board, any of that, whether you're going with Generac, Kohler, Cummings, any of them.
I'm certainly not familiar with Blue Star. All the other ones seem to be...
Well, it seems like any of these that are the bigger ones like this, industrial, when you see the ones that power like big city blocks and everything like that, what I'm seeing is, these, this is the company that are doing these. They're not basically, they're not like your whole home generators or anything like that, you're talking, they're industrial. I think that's why.
So, so that warranty would be what, 10 years, 15 years?
Um, I think-
My hot water heater's 15 years.
On the generators, you're not gonna get a warranty like that. Nothing on that. It, it can be no different than like buying a car.
Just so we can understand the process, there, you identified a need, right? And you started soliciting quotes, and you brought in Brenner to help advise or to quote this for us?
Correct.
Brenner's somebody you trust?
Yeah, absolutely. We did a lot of research on them, they're a local company out of St. Clair, nothing but good reviews on them.
I'm familiar with Brenner.
Yeah.
I like them.
And then this is a unit that they recommend for our, our needs?
Even the other companies with American Generator, who is a huge company here in Michigan, and I think they're actually nationwide, they quote us the same exact generator. We didn't even ask them, we said, okay, we're looking for a generator, this is what we need, this is what our, well, they came out and did a study for us first, to see what our needs were.
Yep.
This is what it, what it came down to, is what we're gonna need to power both units, and they, every, one of the quotes came in with the same exact model.
Great.
So, which made me feel more confident as far as that goes.
Sure.
Everybody was going with the same thing.
So it looks like we've had a conversation with the DDA as well?
Yes.
And getting them to-
They're gonna help us all.
Help pay for part of this process.
Yep.
So with that said, I'll make a motion to approve the Clay Township Police Department generator request. Amount of $72,300, and understanding that we'll have a couple of general, we'll have a couple of fund adjustments to go with that. So I'm just gonna, in one swoop, read with the board's permission, we'd like to purchase a generator from Brenner Electric Quote, sharing half between the police and the general fund for $18,075. We'll have to adjust the general fund line on 101265970, the capital outlay over 5 grand. Up to 6 to cover for this year's budget, and adjust the police fund line on 207265970, the capital outlay over 5,000, up to 10,000 to cover it in the budget. That's my motion.
Support.
We have motion and support. This is gonna require a roll call?
Well, here, I have another question now. They have the items that could influence pricing, they have some options down at the bottom of your quote.
We haven't gone with any of these options.
I see 91,000, left.
No, that's the other-
No, that's the other quote, that'd be American Generator.
Right, that's, that's the only one I see here.
Oh, okay, now there should be one for Brenner Electric in there.
Yeah, the Brenner is a one-page quote, Mark?
There it is.
Yes. Yep.
Okay, well, it's not as, it's not as a, not as complex as American Generator, but-
No, they were trying to, there was a lot of built-ins in there that we just, we did not need. And when you start talking $20,000 more.
Roll call, Kristi?
Yes.
Crystal Regan is a yes. Cindy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
The next order on new business, we have a wastewater treatment plant. Quote rate study, PFM at $23,000, which is going to be a three-way split between Clay, Ira, and Elginak. So our portion is $7,666.67. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the wastewater treatment plant rate study with a cost to Clay Township in the amount of $7,666.67 from line 590938.
Support.
How much was that again?
$7,666.67 would be the cost to Clay Township.
Would we have further discussion?
No.
Mark, would you like some more information?
No, I'm good, thank you.
You good?
I got it.
Okay. So I think this is a, you know, had a request before we bring this whole thing together, right? And it's the thing Ernie's been preaching for a while, to find out exactly who's using how much of the system and whether or not we have any significant breaches, manhole issues, some pumps in the cracks, things that shouldn't be happening. So with that said, we'll make this a roll call, and I believe I'm up first, and I am a yes on the wastewater treatment plant rate study. Cindy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Kristi?
Yes.
So the motion is approved. Next, we have a code enforcement, we're looking to hire a full-time code enforcement officer. We have on the docket, Roman Garaga. And, let's see. I'll just read Ernie's little blurb real quick. As you know, blatant code enforcement has been an issue in Clay and in most communities. We have Shannon, who is doing a great job, but he has started his own business and cannot give us the time the current position requires. He agreed to stay on until we could find a good replacement. I've talked to several people that were not a good fit yet. However, I am now recommending to the board that we hire Roman Garaga as Clay's code enforcement officer. I believe that he will be good for Clay. Roman is a self-starter, very organized, knows how to communicate with people, setting expectations for violators for compliance. Most important, he is community-minded, wants to improve our community through his position, he's very motivated. Roman will be working full-time, 40 hours a week. He has a building background, and has showed interest in the future, becoming a licensed building inspector to be a backup for Gary when he retires. I think Roman could be a long-term solution for Clay Township. He will be paid the same hourly rate as Shannon was being paid. So that was Ernie's blurb. So I will now entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the code enforcement new hire, full-time for Roman Garaga.
I'll support.
We have motion and support. Do we have additional discussion? Kristi?
I had an opportunity to meet with Roman on several different occasions.
Yep.
And he is a pretty level-headed individual, who's familiar with the community, the building department, football, Elginak School Districts, and a lot of the area here, so I feel very comfortable with putting him in that position.
Great. Thank you, Mark.
I know he's got a great working background, so I'm excited to see him get after our issues.
I think we all have different dealings with Roman, and that's good as a board. I support Roman as well. I, I think he's the right guy, he has the right demeanor. I'm hoping that his background will support what he's about to embark in. But I think he's the right guy for the right job, so I certainly support it as well. Do you have any other discussion?
I don't. Roman was unable to attend this evening, but I advised him that we'll let him get his feet wet a little bit and get into the job, and then maybe we'll kinda have him come into a board meeting and let us know where things are currently at.
He's already been working.
Oh, yes.
Basically, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah, he worked all last week, we brought him on as a temp.
Yep.
See if he would like it, and if we, if, you know, it worked well with us, and he absolutely had no problem with that, he agreed, and things have been going great, and he's looking forward to a, a working relationship with Clay Township.
Hopefully, he'll be more visible than the other building officials we had.
I'm excited about it, right?
Yeah.
I think we have a need, and I think we have a need for a full-time. I think at, right now, he's an at-will employee, so, you know, if we catch up and things slow down, then this community's gonna be in a little different position. Good for us. But, but I don't see that happening anytime soon. So, that being said, this will be a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Valentine.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
And I'm also yes. That's unanimous. Welcome aboard, Mr. Garaga. Next, 1D, we have a planning commission. We're looking to reappoint Christine Holcomb. Her terms of service will be 11/21/2022 to 11/15/2025. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion on what you said, Chris, reappoint Christine Holcomb from, with the, from 11/21/22 to 11/15/25.
Support.
We have motion and support.
And Christine Holcomb has been a main chair, or assistant chair, for the planning commission for the past four years, I believe. Somewhere like that, and she, as well as on the planning commission, and as a secretary, so she's handled all the positions involved in the, the planning commission, and she's a great person for the job.
Good. Hey, Ernie wrote up a little blurb, so I just, I'll just pass it along. I would like to recommend to the board that we reappoint Christine Holcomb to the planning commission. She's expressed interest to the whole board to serve on the planning commission. Christine has been a good member with good attendance, and has been serving as secretary. I would like to thank her for her service so far. So with that being said, do we have, we have a motion and support?
We do.
Okay, so this is a roll call, starting with Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
Crystal Regan is a yes. Cindy?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Christine Holcomb. Your term has been extended. Last order of business, we have 1E, it's to set a public hearing for Park and Rec Plan on December 19th of this year, 2022, at 6:00 PM.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for the Parks and Rec Plan on December 19th, 2022, at 6:00 PM.
Support. We have motion to support. Support. Any discussion? Mark?
So the draft of the, the Parks and Rec Plan is also on our website, if anyone would like to look at it. There's a link to it, and right now, it's just a draft until we do the public hearing, and then it'll go back to Planning Commission, correct? And then to us? So.
So you're recommending that actually read the plan before they come to the meeting?
Everybody should read the plan.
Fantastic idea.
It's, actually, this one isn't bad, I think it's only like 37 pages, but they've done a lot of work on it, so.
Yeah, Cindy Babish has been a main player in the rec plan, so she's done a great job with that.
She has.
She's a township asset, no doubt. I believe we can go consent agenda on this one. So all in favor of the pub, setting the public hearing date for the Parks and Rec Plan at December 19th, 2022, at 6:00 PM? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That concludes the new business. We are on to the board member comments. Mark, we'll start down at that end?
Not much. Happy Thanksgiving, giving to everyone. Stay safe out there during the holidays, and I'm sure Chief Coach will be out on the streets, making sure that happens.
Thank you, Mark. Kristi?
I'm just letting everyone know, some people have actually called and wondered, but with the winter tax bills are being mailed, they're scheduled for mailing next week on the 29th, November 29th, so those will be going out. And then also a reminder that we are collecting donations for the Goodfellows, just like we've done the last couple of years. Hats, gloves, toys, monetary donations, whatever.
Right here at the office?
Yes.
Fantastic.
That's it. Happy Thanksgiving.
Hey, can we just touch on real quick, when they're paying a bill for the township, and let's just say it's the water bill, for example, right? When you use the township website to pay that serve, there is two options to pay, right? There's a debit, I mean, an automatic withdrawal, and then there's a credit version, right?
Yes, credit card or e-check.
Or e-check. Or e-check. Okay, so the e-check is very cost-effective, correct?
Yes, 95 cents.
As compared to...
325 for a credit card.
So you're going to save a couple of bucks and some, if you write an e-check?
Right.
I know that confuses some of the people in our township.
Well, I said mine electronically, is that cost...
Through your bank or through...
Through my bank.
Yep, through your bank, so it's probably a free service. But the thing with sending it through your bank is that they are actually mailing us a physical paper check.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, yeah.
So if you don't schedule it in time for the mail to bring it to us, then you could potentially face that 10% penalty.
Okay.
If we don't receive it. So the convenience of Invoice Cloud is that it's live with our system, and when you pay it, it's live onto your account.
Perfect. Thank you. Ms. Vailton?
I just want to say congratulations to Roman Garaga and Christine Holcomb, and wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Just a quick reminder, I believe the Lions Club still has a couple of tickets left for this Wednesday's shrimp dinner?
Yes, we do.
If you're interested in going, it's just about sold out, but you can contact Trustee Richard or contact the Lions Club in Algonquin. Try and scoop up the last couple of tickets. Congratulations to Roman Garaga and Christine Holcomb. Thank you to our department heads for showing up today, and I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned, everyone. Thank you for coming.